With the new hearings for the budgets all done, it should be outside. Right until call on air, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Penello.
Here.
Councilmember Layton.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. It's member Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Backwood.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
The other county legislature's meeting of the year begins. Thank you. They will take written votes on several projects, including on eighty-five billion hardware.
We could go and give a moment of silence and reflection for our court of fire department. We lost Gerald Cock, a longtime volunteer member of the fire department, the fire police. You passed the.
Have faith in that they're going to keep us informed.
Probably like to play their more goals that they can run quickly, but it's.
Thank you. And I also would like to sign off.
That that should be the company they have.
He said, so probably probably heard it against the thing, but shares concern about the file price tag. Not.
And. All right, so I have a presentation we'll talk about later, so we'll go right to privilege of the floor. I have Rick McCallum and Stafford driving Portland.
There's no problem to any second. There's not probably something by six Democrats on the west.
Good evening. I appreciate the council giving me the privilege of the floor. I want to talk some about some of the issues with retiree health insurance program. My understanding, the mayor has now been in contact with Patrick County Health Insurance Consortium, and they have discussed and offered to provide the same at a group health Medicare Advantage Plan previously discussed and offered by this Syracuse firm with Taylor Prior, who this plan offered by the consortium bears the plan offered by the force said firm, but the savings to the city would be substantially more than the original one point four million dollar estimate. Obviously, this would be a substantial amount, a substantial amount of cost savings to the city, but at what cost to the retirees' health insurance coverage is? Concern of the city retirees that I have spoken to is that neither of these plans is as good or better than our contractually guaranteed health insurance benefits that we earn during our many years of service to the city of Portland. Let's face the facts. You never get something for nothing. If anyone thinks otherwise, they're fooling themselves. Any cost savings will come at a loss of some important insurance benefits and coverage to our members, or the plan would not be offered for less money. It's simple common sense. Ask anyone that has knowledge of health insurance plans, and they will tell you that Medicare Advantage Plan are not what they're advertised to be. There will be shortfalls compared to what we have currently. Our retirees have researched the advantage plans that are offered, and no matter how you want to slice it, there are shortfalls in the coverage that make the advantage plans less beneficial to retirees than what we are currently enjoying, which is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Excel. Just a few items uncovered by our research that would not be covered under an advantage plan are the at-home healthcare options, hospice care, two very important and expensive benefits we would lose if we switched over to an advantage plan. I'd also point out that the city has been involved in litigation without leaving PPW retirees in the past over health insurance issues, and ultimately lost costing the city untold amounts of money. The city also tried at one time to remove the prescription program from our health insurance program and benefits. And when faced with litigation over these benefits, the city backed away from that issue, allowing those benefits to continue. Without beating issue to death, I'd like to remind the mayor and the council of statements made in open common council meetings by Mayor Steve. He indicated, and I quote, "We never rushed or forced the issue of retirees to change to an advantage plan and wanted retirees and council members to be fully educated on the issues." He also agreed to have any change in insurance coverage being opt-in for retirees as opposed to his, uh, his original proposal to change everyone over and then have our retirees opt out if they did not want to participate in the advantage plan. He also said that he valued our many years of service to the city and would never suggest a plan that he didn't think was as good or better than our current plan. Is my understanding, the plan being offered by the consortium, by the way, is only being offered to the city if all current eligible retirees are enrolled into the new program. Otherwise, it would not be available to the city. It was also suggested, voted on and passed by the mayor and the county council that an independent consultant would be sought out and hired by the city to conduct an examination of our current plan and the advantage plan and report on the findings of that comparison. No such consultant has been hired, and there has been no independent study made, to my knowledge. Retirees requested a meeting be set up in which a member of the Portland County Area Agency on Aging could be present to discuss Medicare Advantage Plans and educate us on the pluses and minuses, leaving our current coverage plan and enrolling in advantage plan. No such meeting has ever been set up. In conclusion, I want to state that our retirees will not stand idly by and watch our health insurance coverage that we work so hard for substituted for a lesser plan by the mayor in favor of a cost-saving Medicare Advantage Plan. It appears to me the mayor is more interested in saving money, what he calls his fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, than he is in keeping contractual obligations that were guaranteed to the dedicated retirees who worked very hard to earn them. It also appears he is so focused on what he believes comparable insurance plan, that he fails to see the shortfalls in the advantage plan, and ultimately the retirees will suffer. The mayor has stated that the information we have received is completely non-factual and inaccurate. Those are quotes. He goes into state, he goes on to state that no plans, and there is nobody looking, doing back room anything. I would remind the mayor and the council members of how this all started. It started with Mayor Steve placing the insurance changeover plan on the City of Portland Common Council meeting as an agenda item for resolution without any prior discussion or notification to retirees. Once the mayor found out the retirees were coming to the meeting and speak out against this changeover, he withdrew the item from the meeting agenda just prior to the meeting. If we, the retirees, had not caught this in time, it very well could have been voted on and passed by the council without our input. The mayor had also stated on several occasions, and I quote again, "I can just do this. I don't need anyone's permission." If this isn't an example, isn't an example of a backroom style of conducting business, then I don't know what is. I thank you for the privilege of the floor, and I want to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Fairchild.
Or I have no mayor or council. Thank you for the purpose of speaking. I also want to speak on how this starts. I think your opportunity to speak, but I also want to address the health insurance issue. It's actually a mute issue. This is a dead issue. It should be go away with the federal law twelve twenty-one. Since you're going to have to take away our visual Medicare, the government sponsors it. You can have to do it. It's illegal. It's a special law, so it's actually a waste of time discussing this. But, um, Mr. Mary, you did this in July. You challenged us to have open mind and do our research. We have, we create a master here. We know more. We really want to know. For the advantage program, size the federal law, the tier three drug plan goes against our contract. It violates our contract. Right now, the tier three drugs are cancer, rheumatitis, diabetes, those kind of the heavy, the fun illnesses. And those drugs are very expensive because for some thousand dollars a month. Right now, Pro Act, we pay zero. My wife's on MS. We pay zero. With a bench program, it's eighty dollars a month. It's capped unlimited. So when you meet that cap, it's out of pocket. Definitely seven hours a month. I just, um, I know, Mr. Mary, you had the no intent to harm anyone. I appreciate that, but it does harm us and our families. And I wish this was a little glory. And you did challenge us to look into it. We spent five months, no meetings, just one meeting with this one company. I also come to talk to us. You promised us the cross the shield would come talk to us. We've not met with them. You promised the office of aging would talk to us. We've not met with them five months. This keeps dragging on, dragging on. Our families are about this. This would go away. I know you don't intend to harm us, but it does harm us and does harm our family. And let's thank you for your time, and I hope you really look at it hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm here to issue this probably the oldest retiree here. I returned thirty years ago. And when we set up this program, more years than that, we set it as a reward. We're not using sick time, not abusing the advantage you have. And it's worked out very well. And all of a sudden, out of the blue, I get informed that you want to change it. I received nothing, ma'am. Word of mouth, which is very sad. And talking about the differences.
Instead.
My wife and I, we're a little older than most of you guys. We have a lot of doctors.
And.
Medicare Advantage Program can tell you what doctors you can use, what doctors you can't. Really scares me because I don't want to change any of the doctors I got a wonderful relationship with. More than the waves kind of like hand. I want to see some work sneaky, but here it is. Take it, leave it. It's really, but we're doing it. And I have a contract with them. They're using when I retired under that says that the council has to have representation. Any discussion may change. It can then may have changed with upgraded contracts. That's the way I retired. That's what it was. And I just wanted to support you, staying with the way we have it and not, not changing it because it's working very well for this. Those are those who are twenty years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's your guy.
Hey, everyone. My name is Tim Bennett. I'm the owner of the show, according to voice. I'm not here for the news. Um, I'm here about, um, uh, New Year's Eve. Um, this is just something, um, for years, the originally for years with Portland Downtown Partnership, ran the event and worked with John Scanlon's staff, John Scanlon, at the time, you know, the, uh, hot tower owner of Maine and Fort Washington, um, sorry, CDP owned the ball. I know they're putting it for all the events that they did like. Or they did, uh, which is, uh, the New Year's event, the New Year's Eve event. They also owned celebration, and they also formed an event, you know, Taste of Portland, Taste of Downtown. Um, the reason why I'm speaking is I purchased both of those events and the equipment with the events in twenty nineteen. Um, the city didn't put a bid in, you know, whether it be recreational or fire or anybody for that event. You know, no one, they didn't put it. Originally, there were four groups. The only two groups that put in a bid were myself. I didn't even do it as one towards another business I own or important voice. It is that individual. A member of the city, uh, resident of the city and according to standard, and I, I, I bid them. So I, I, I wanted to, um, put in over five figures for these events and the items that came with them. I ran the event with John Scanlon and his, his staff, you know, they put up the ball, changed the number and everything for me, and I purchased the ball. And they did that twenty nineteen going into twenty twenty. I didn't hold the event going into twenty-one or twenty-two because of COVID. Um, I thought about going into twenty-two. I spoke with different people from the city and county. I'm not going to disclose who those people are, but I do have record of doing so. And they said it wouldn't be in the best interest. So I didn't. Um, I had a plan that was even lined up for this year, um, early in the year of this year, twenty twenty-two. I spoke with the former owner of Hot Tower because that was sold. And I, and I said that I had budget line for, uh, his staff to be paid, and that would be the first time it ever they were ever paid for that event because the past years before I even purchased, they weren't paid. Um, or at least paid by the event. Excuse me. I don't know what he did, maybe outside of it, but not through the event. Um, I had sponsors lined up that would have paid for everything plus that. So I tried to be more inclusive, help everyone out, help the bars, everybody knows how. Um, so like I said, I had it being budgeted, and that was going to be the first time ever. In twenty nineteen, to do the event, I came here and basically said the same words. Hi, my name is Tim Bennett. I'm the owner and publisher of the Portland Voice because I was the legislator. I said I was going to do the event. I had filled out paperwork to do the event, and that's all I had to fill out. I didn't have to fill out any paperwork on the lines of saying, um, hey, do you want to? Do you want to, uh, do this event? Like, do you want to use our net work? Do you want to use our ball? Or do you want to use anything? Because to be honest with you, I provided everything. Um, I heard the fireworks company signed a contract with that, with them. And I did have a sponsor, our main sponsor that year was, um, uh, the Neil's, uh, insurance company. They have to give me for, um, like.
Find out if this, it was.
Just ended on. I understand that, you know, obviously every year businesses change, you know, there's different managers and different things. And in this situation, I understand that this is like your first full year in and things like that. Well, and I understand that, you know, Eric did buy the clock tower and things like that, but historically I had worked where John, with John, that we did the event and everything. Um, but basically what I'm going at, not just to ramble, but. I mean, to that, I was, um, originally I was told that, you know, everybody was going to be open to having me assist with the event. I mean, originally it was my event, and then, you know, name changed, city puts it through. My question is, I haven't heard anything, and I'm not putting it all on you because, I mean, you're busy making, you gotta do everything, you know, or oversee at least. But I know there's different departments. Well, there's different departments and committees and things, and I hear from anybody. I mean, I know we see each other, whether it be at divisions, um, after hours, I saw a lot, September eleventh, things like that. And we've seen each other, but I haven't heard from anybody. I'm very accessible. Um, but if, I mean, being that I'm not in those meetings, being that it's one of these ways, you have your own ball at school. But if you needed to use mine, I haven't heard anything from anyone. So that's all I wanted to ask, you know, respectfully. I haven't heard from anybody. I have tried to call on people at times and didn't hear back, but I know that if I come at six o'clock, first and third Tuesdays, I can catch you. So here we are. Um, I'll put the mic down unless you guys have any questions or anything for me. And one thing I was asking you was to show the, um, the purchase agreement, and I did that. All I did was cross out the amount because I didn't, I didn't concern anybody, just like, you know, now Eric owns Hot Tower. I'm sure you didn't ask to see how much you paid John. Um, so this wouldn't concern anyone either. But, um, was there any questions or anything that anyone really had for me? You know, I'm, I'm here for the city, for the community, greater community. I've been there since I finished. It's all free. You know, as a student, I got my degree. Um, I don't know what else I could do. No, I mean, I'm, I'm extending my hand, you know? They call me. Mayor.
I was the last one. He's last. Mayor, can I speak about our meeting the other day, so you can discuss some issues on that? As far as, yeah. Let me address it, and then if you can speak to that, I'll, okay, sure.
Okay, um, there's a finance report, so we'll go away to the mayor's. Um, so I guess first I'm going to address a couple of statements that were made. Um, as of our last, I'm not, I'm really kind of perplexed on why this festered to where it is and why there's people in the audience worried about the healthcare. And it's kind of a little, um, um, concerned about it in the sense that, you know, I mean, like Mr. Fairchild brought up, this is people's lives, and we take it very seriously to do that. And just as important as people's lives is to get the accurate information out there. And there's numerous things. I'm not going to sit here and debate those things with different people because we have a plan. We have not implemented that plan. Uh, it has been a lot of time, and there's been a lot of changes. The consortium did add something. I had nothing to do with that. Um, you had called them before. I didn't even know until you had called them first, Mr. McMullin, and then they called me and told me they talked to you, and that's when I found out they had it. So I didn't implement that. I had nothing to do with that. Um, but I had been talking to him afterwards to determine what that was. And, um, you know, I have my opinion, and you and I talked to him, but as well, that I don't agree with forcing people to opt in, which is what that only option they have. But that's my opinion. It's up to this council, not mine. Uh, and that would be presented completely different than what we discussed. And what we discussed at our last meeting, when somebody from the council asked for an update on this insurance, I said, well, it's all changed now. We have four different options that are coming up now because now there's a rebate and there's other things, and we haven't had a chance to look into it. But we're looking into it. We're still trying to get some, uh, RRT responded to the RRT for education. So until now, that that's changed. Yeah, that we had updated everybody here, that we were still working on that educational piece. Um, I have a short, uh, open and current as well.
Believe me, they are going to fly and stack everything.
Email and call if we have any of those information.
That wasn't anywhere near around here.
But discussing something first, as we discussed before, man of my word, we said we would bring it out there.
I know there was no one they was around.
There is something on the agenda for the consortium, and it's not changing the treasurer and adding people. Uh, but we're still members of the consortium, so we have to take action on that legally. Uh, so it has nothing to do with anything but that. Um, there's no policy changes, uh, due to that. So, um, so I'm not sure where that, um, you know, the hysteria or chaos is coming from. Um, but I certainly, you know, empathize with people that have heard, you know, they're in, you know, hospice and, and concerned for that. I'm concerned that they're hearing these rumors that they're not going to be able to have that anymore. I don't think it's fair. So, uh, and again, uh, I try to, you know, my door is open, uh, and many people take advantage of that and therefore busy, but I'm there every day, all day, uh, do everything I can to try to communicate. I educated this board and reminded them exactly honestly where we were. I'm not quite sure where this communication and this confusion has come from. Uh, but, uh, because there are the other options, there's no sense having lots of the agency come in. There's no sense having Blue Cross Blue Shield come in. There's no sense in doing any of that until we really know what a good plan is. And maybe there won't be a good plan. I don't know. Um, but at this point, you know, there's, you know, rebates that the federal government's offering. So again, it plays against all that. I don't want to sit and argue and discuss all that because it's not the time or place. And I think having experts there would be the time and place to do that. This is not me against retirees at any point. I'm just trying to implement a possibility of what it has to be. This council will make that decision, and I said that clearly. The council will make that decision. What is the best for the city, the retirees, and weighing everything in place? But they need all the information, so we will put that together at that point. Mr. Carpenter.
Okay, so the other day I met with Mr. Steve. Um, we talked, the mayor and I, for at least an hour or two. And we talked about this plan, and he guaranteed me that it would be opt-in only. That what you said, Mr. Man, right? Opt-in only for retirees. And then we also discussed when it went to the agenda item, and it was proposed that I would be able to look at the agenda item and rewrite it or look at it so it fits to where it is in the plan. So that is going to be, you know, he guaranteed me that, that I would look at it, be able to rewrite it as to where it fits in our, the retirees' plan. So that was discussed.
And that would be way after everybody else has a chance to weigh in. So I just want to make sure that that's perfectly clear. So, you know, I, I know that there wasn't anything said in the last meeting that would cause that confusion, but we will certainly make sure that that's done. So I don't think there's any reason to really debate or discuss all the inaccuracies and some of the other statements, because I don't know that that's necessary at this point where you believe something I don't know what it's going to be. So we have four different options, four different ways to go or maintain. But I think this, you know, we'll continue on with the education process like we promised. Unfortunately, we don't have that person or persons that education that, or even though what the plans are. So research is being done. We, we promise we'll let you know after that. Okay, anybody else have any questions on that? So, um, so, uh, back to the mayor's report. So, you know, I met with the hospital in the last two weeks, trying to deal with their, their situation. Uh, met with the committee to work on parking and redesign parking lots to, uh, um, possibly being different parking and fix it parking, created the redesign, uh, brought it out and gained sixty-five parking spots. So that would be a good thing. Plus, when we get that worked out, so there's some good stuff happening there. Uh, was worked on the property insurance, which is a later resolution. Uh, trash, trash, trash. Been a lot of conversation about trash. Uh, and that changeover, when our lighting is Thursday at six o'clock over at the, at the park, so I appreciate everybody supporting them on that. Of course, New Year's Eve on the thirty-first. Um, the, um, the other thing, I don't know, it's, uh, did Paul get in there yet? Steve? What else? I was like, okay, we can wrap him. So. I just. Oh, Paul and Oroska. Is he here?
Really close.
Really close. Okay. Not that, not Paul saying it. I'm sorry. Not that. I'm sorry. Right, so I'll go ahead and dress. Sorry, Paul. Sorry. And he has a tough last name. I don't think I did pronounce it, so. Um, so I, I just want to pass around the council, and everybody else can take a look at it. Um, in, in appreciation, this is kind of a neat token that we were able to receive. Uh, when we sent over the voter vests and the items from the fire department, from the fire team uh, to the Ukraine during their kind of need, which is still now, uh, they did send back a little memento, uh, token of that. And, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's really cool. This is a token of one of ten, and it's a, of a, a wing from a plane that was shot down in the Ukraine, and there's some other pictures here that, like, everybody that share, and certainly Puppi can look at it, too. It's really kind of neat. It was nice of them to show that appreciation, uh, to us. So that's kind of like enjoyable stuff, I'm sure. So, uh, but he was going to come in and, is he ready? Okay, so maybe he could tell his side of it and maybe, uh, to discuss that.
This is Paul Landeschuk. He's a firefighter with us here in the city of Portland. Um, Pablo, uh, and I'll speak briefly and then let you go on to the people down there. Pablo originally from the Ukraine, from Ukraine. Um, and he helped spearhead some of the equipment that the fire department, uh, the U surplus that we sent overseas to help them during the conflict, as well as some of the, uh, stuff with police department. He's been integrally involved in that. Um, and his family's still there, and I'm going to let him speak to that a little bit, um, and, uh, kind of give you an update version of what's going on. And, uh, that, uh, is here and we're supporting.
Um, my name is Pablo, uh, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Mine, like a lot of Ukrainians, our lives kind of stopped. Uh, about twenty-three hundred hours, we heard of first missile strikes, uh, in our home country. And, um, yeah, like any normal person, our lives stopped then. And, uh, we stopped waiting for tomorrow's day. We thought the signals our bodies were sending to us kind of all stopped. Uh, music was no longer important. What was important is wait till about twenty-three hundred hours the next day to make sure our families are okay. Um, it was a difficult time. Uh, our families would let us know about eight AM their time, seven AM, whenever they got up, uh, that they were okay. They were alive. They were safe. Uh, and over the next couple of months, what would happen is, uh, our families, brothers, sisters, cousins, friends would be. Our families, brothers, sisters, cousins, friends would be drafted in the armed forces of Ukraine. To help fight, uh, what would be known as the Russian invasion of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, over the next couple of years, I got calls from Battalion Chief Reynolds, uh, Chief Friedman. Saying that we have circles here, uh, we would like it to do some good back home in Ukraine. Uh, and so, over the course of the next few months, I would help and. Uh, reach out to people there and reach out to people here who are organizing aid to go to Ukraine. To, uh, make sure that gear got to where it needed to go, uh, city of Portland's gear. Uh, specifically. Made its way to Yipane, where early twenty-twenty-two, the Russians were pretty merciless there. There were bombing buildings, they were, uh, taking over hospitals and and the such, and lately. It has been seen in Buckmont, where I don't know if any of you guys have stayed up to date on this, but it's the heaviest fighting in Ukraine. Um, so, and our gear has been seen there, city of Portland firefighter gear, uh, Virgil firefighter gear has been seen there. As well as the village of Palmer, uh, all these departments as well as Crapple and a few others that I've forgotten. Uh, they've donated gear, which has made its way to the frontline, so to say, of Ukraine. And has been seen to help people, regular citizens, this isn't. Uh, it's not going to military aid to recapture ground or or territory, which is all good and well. But this is helping regular citizens of Ukraine, regular civilians, um, and we have seen that so far. As I thank you, as well as Chief Sandy, as well has, uh, helped in donating some ballistic armor. Um, some body armor, some vests, some helmets as well. Uh, through the Ukrainian church and, uh, I have family in Ukraine, as every Ukrainian does right now. Fighting for their freedom and, uh. Some of my family has gotten together and through machine shops also owned by my family and. Uh, guys who are on the ground fighting, they've, uh, been able to recapture some Russian fighter jets. And, uh, some shrapnel from them and some scraps from the fighter jets and they created challenge points. And we wanted to represent them and we wanted to present them to the city council as well as the mayor and. The chiefs who have helped us all out when we needed it most, um. Battalion Chief Reynolds as well as Chief Friedman, uh, they checked in on me at numerous times whenever. Uh, I went silent or or anything of the sort, they've checked in on me and they've suffered through my pictures of my family. Sleeping through bomb shelters, you know, eight, nine, ten-year-old siblings, uh, who. This is the life they live now, uh, they wake up in bomb shelters, they wake up, uh, not going to school, doing online schooling if they can. Um, and so, some of my family wanted to, as a gift, create these challenge points that they created. Uh, from down Russian fighter jets and present them to the city as a token of thank you. It's a small thing that we could have done, uh, however, we wanted to present it to the city. Um, and thank you guys for all your support, there's a lot you guys could have just sat through. And so this is someone else's problem, this is not our big deal, um, but you guys stepped up to the plate. Uh, I I can't even begin to imagine to tell you the impact that your donations and your contributions have made. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it, thank for the update. Make sure the ministry reflects it, um. Prior to the tool for the miss, uh, December sixth. Um, so, um, that kinda get a motion to approve the mess. Back with Mr. Carpenter, any questions on the mess? Uh, agenda item number one, about twenty-twenty-three city budget.
Resolve that the city of Portland, the common council does hereby adopt the two thousand twenty-three fire city budget. Set budget being unchanged from the proposed city budget filed with the city clerk pursuant to resolution number two. Hundred and three of two thousand twenty-two. And be it further resolved that pursuant to Article twenty-one, Section C, twenty-one twelve of the city charter, order copies of the adopted two thousand twenty-three city budget. Shall be certified by the city clerk. With one such copy to be filed in the office of the mayor. And one each in the offices of the director of administration and finance, the city clerk. And one placed in the Portland free library with additional certified copies to be printed or otherwise reproduced as needed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall make the adopted two thousand twenty-three city budget. Available to the public by printed copy and electronically on the city website.
Uh, Mr. Scott. Any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Member Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then item number two, authorized city negotiations with the county relative to current sales tax sharing agreements.
Resolve that in consideration of the upcoming June first, two thousand twenty-three sales tax sharing agreement clause. The city of Portland Common Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve. Enter into negotiations with the county of Portland relative to the current sales tax sharing approach and allocation to the city.
So, Mr. Scott. Uh, so this is going to, uh, give us the opportunity to go through all the sales tax and review all the sales tax and how we're receiving sales tax. Uh, and possibly preempt. Uh, preemption is certainly different now than it was before, you think about all the Christmas gifts everybody's received. And, uh, as we continue on with forty-seven percent. Uh, the non-tax rules, including all the, uh, hospitals, the college, everybody that, the county itself. That's all assisting all the people in our community. Uh, I believe that we should be getting a better share of that, so that would be the purpose of this, uh, negotiation. Anybody have any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number three.
Mayor, could this amount three?
Uh, sure, uh.
Mr. Jewett, could you read, would you read the last paragraph of that resolution to count down paragraph four, it talks about retirees. Benefits, it doesn't change, make sure you read that also. There is, if I miss the agreement, do not change any health insurance benefits again.
We wrote it that way for sure.
Make sure we read that.
Yep. Agenda item number three, authorize twenty-twenty-three amended municipal cooperative agreement of the Greater Tompkins. County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium.
I'll read the preceding one as well. Whereas the amendments to the agreement relate to the addition of municipal participants and transfer duties from a board treasurer to a consortium finance manager. And whereas the amendments to the agreement do not change any health insurance or benefits provided to city employees or retirees. Uh, going to the resolved statement. Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council approves and authorizes Mayor Steve to sign the two thousand twenty-three amendment. To the municipal cooperative agreement of the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium. And be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized to certify this resolution. To indicate its approval, transmit a copy thereof to the board of directors of the Greater Tompkins County Municipal Health Insurance Consortium. And take any other such actions as may be required by law.
A motion.
No. There's someone, again, uh, we purposely wrote that in that word, in those whereas, and so that nobody would get that, we have to take care of business with that one again. It's basically the changing the treasurer, uh, to the finance manager instead of the treasurer position, those finance managers, so anything administrarily has to be done by resolution. As per their charter.
Their agreement's been posted online.
Yeah, they're agreeing to sport docs, so it should have been clear, so, uh, anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number four, authorize mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city for Portland. City of Portland for property, category, auto and professional liability insurance coverage effective January first, twenty-twenty-three.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve enter into an agreement. With the insurance company that meets all qualifications necessary to provide the city of Portland with coverage that best meets its liability and financial needs.
A motion.
A motion.
Now, Mr. Scott. So again, it's in the resolution, but I'll remind you, so, uh, so we put this out of our, we, uh, bid to try to get our best insurance. Uh, that we could, uh, we have been with Niner for thirty years, so, um. And, um, their renewal rate was at about three hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, bits came in from, uh, another company, um, and it was three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so I'm, you know, in negotiation with them, of course, Niner came back now, so we're back and forth right now, met with them both again today. And I'm trying to do it, so we were able to not only reduce our cost by twenty percent, it's significant. Sixty-eight thousand dollars, but also be able to increase our umbrella coverage, so, uh. We we should really be about ten million dollars on our umbrella, or about five. Coming up from four, so, um, so it's all, and then they have what's called a tower. Umbrella coverage is the difference, so we get five million for each. Each division, so if it was a property, we get five million on that, plus the five million umbrella, if there's a vehicle, five million, at least with five million and five million. But, so we got some, some good synergy going, but I need to, I won't be able to have it done, I didn't have a chance, I won't be able to have it done today, so. I need to sign it next week, so that's why I'm looking for a council agreement to sign.
Who's the other company?
Trident. Has been in a home, they currently locally, uh, city, I think they do city Albany. And, uh, they actually do the county as well, so they've been doing the county for a few years as well. Rapidly pulling their out there. But there wouldn't be any, any changes from anybody other than insurance cards and the cars, that that's about the change. Okay?
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve to enter into an agreement with the insurance, oh, we've read that. Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number five, authorize city to enter into agreements with certain property owners for trash and recycling pickup.
Resolve that the common council authorizes Mayor Steve, or his designated, enter into written agreements between the city of Portland. And residents located outside the boundaries of the city that are along routes established by the city and Blue Moose Sanitation Incorporated. As well as businesses within the city. And be it further resolved that a condition of such agreements is that such residents and business owners. Pay the city of Portland an annual cost of two hundred and fifty dollars for use of city-provided trash and recycling totes. And that they comply with all requirements of the city's trash and recycling program. And be it further resolved that the city shall decline to enter into such agreements if the city or Blue Moose Sanitation Incorporated. Determine that such properties are not along established routes or would otherwise, otherwise affect normal operations. And be it further resolved that the terms of such agreements and costs for totes shall be reviewed. Reviewed annually and the common council may amend such costs and amend or cancel such agreements.
And Mr. Scott. Yep, yeah. Yeah, so on this one, um, the situation is that, um. You know, we find out that there's many people using the blueback systems that are outside the city, so we've been subsidizing some of that. Uh, so, and we also have people like Kennedy Parkway, that, uh, is a Billy's district, that, uh, you know, a couple of those. Small offices that don't generate a lot, and so we're utilizing it, so this gives them an option to be somewhere outside of that, they would pay the two fifty, we'd give them the totes. They would be able to do it, it's within the traffic. The other areas that we're talking about is, you know, at, we're dying, so at the top of the hill, there's. You know, three houses, four houses that, did you get outside the city limits that were utilizing the blueback and never turning around and coming back? Th- this gives them that option as well, uh, to to cover that, so we, something that. I never knew was happening and would never would have caught it, so it's something that'd be an adjustment to what we originally had.
It's actually cheaper probably than with. A hauler, so a hauler to do with that.
I think in some cases for sure, I mean, and I think, uh, in the end, I think, uh, they're all doing better with the blueback, I mean, that's what it, that's caught, that reimburses us the cost of the tote. And the trash hauling from that year. So every year we will still implement that same cost, even though they would be, basically, it would be a revenue generator.
Right.
So in the end, so that's about what it costs this for total, see me an idea. So we're just a solution to try to solve some of your. Yeah, maybe just be creative. Anybody else?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then item number six, authorized public hearing for restoring New York grant application.
Resolve that on January third, two thousand twenty-two at six PM prior to its scheduled regular meeting. The common council shall hold a public hearing to allow the. For public comments on submission of a restored New York application. In the amount of two million dollars to facilitate the renovation of the building that formerly housed Parker Elementary School for residential use. And that the city clerk shall publish, uh, notice of such sharing in the official newspaper of the city of Portland.
I'm moving.
Uh, so this is for, uh, our, um, Parker School. We have some interested parties and this would give them options to be able to have, apply for the restored New York, try to get that. On that note, there'll be a press release tomorrow going out, that'll be, there's one point five million restoring New York. Signed by the governor today for the Gillette factory, so congratulations on that project, that's gonna be awesome. Uh, to make that project, uh, that's gonna be a nice one for our gateway coming in, so that'll clean that up and that's. Um, not as high as they wanted, but it's, it's pretty, it's pretty darn good, so.
When will the Parker School Committee be involved?
Uh, we will, uh, we were gonna be in that meeting probably, uh, the week after, the first week in January, we'll start talking and discussing with what we have. Once we get something formal, we will sit down.
I did have a conversation with, uh, today over at Homer High School with, uh, Tammy Stokie. Who lives in the Parker School District. And she was wondering if, if the people in the neighborhood were going to be. Uh, contacted.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, it's hard to keep running a negotiation process, but for sure, I mean, it would be. As we try to do everything transparent, everything would be understood and everybody would recognize, wouldn't it know, know, but. Do we have something in paper, it's all talk now, so. And we get something more closer in paper, then we'll convene, and then that committee will decide the best way to public educate you all that, and you're on that, so you're gonna think yes. Alright, so, uh. Yeah, yeah, Tom, you've got to be my key back, but Tom. Tom and the show some people in there today, so I couldn't make it. Um, okay, so, uh, move the question.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, declare no mow May for twenty-twenty-three.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council declares the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, is no mow May. And invites homeowners to register their properties to participate by pledging not to mow in the month of May. Be it further resolved that the city of Portland Department is directed to not issue citations during the month of May, two thousand twenty-three, for lawn height. Or properties which are enrolled in the no mow May program.
Mr. Lane?
Got my question. Emphasize no mow May. We all know how you man, long tall grass.
June one, Mr. Everybody else will become calm, but I think it's great, I'm excited about this program, thank you for initiating it, I think, uh. Uh, I think it's, you know, it's a neat, neat, neat idea, that's a neat testament to, uh, only care about our environment. Uh, anybody else, okay, we'll move it.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Sillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, authorized purchase and transfer of punch or replacement of mask fit test. Certification machine.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council authorizes fire chief to purchase a replacement respiratory pit test machine. With additional appropriate equipment and a five-year warranty and calibration service from T S I Incorporated. For a total amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars, with funding coming from fire department. Uh account A three, four, one, zero, five, four, two, zero, zero, two, which shall be reimbursed from a contingency account. Um this unit is compatible and will be used by all departments within the city of Portland, and be it further resolved. That the common council authorizes the current. For the count pit test machine model number eight, zero, three, zero surplus and authorize the said unit to be traded in on replacement. On the replacement machine to offset total cost.
Awesome. Mister Scott. That was, so again, um she just brought this up, they spent a lot of money maintaining it, it's repaired last year. Uh probably a lot towards what it would take to replace it, so um made the decision that the best thing to do is to replace it. And um the police use it as well as the fire and uh it's wastewater. So uh and she lied across, rather than you did a cost analysis based on trying to determine if we had an outside vendor do the testing and do it. And it it pays itself back quickly, so. Um that's kind of where we left that. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
I.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
And agenda item number nine, authorized application for fee payment. The Environmental Protection Agency E P A for the Homeland Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act of the U F I law.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council authorizes Mayor Steve to sign and submit. The binding application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency and authorizes the payments of the twenty-five thousand dollar application fee to the P A.
Motion. Um Mister Beckwith and Sullum, um again, this is so, I just want to recognize the twenty-five thousand dollars we have to pay up for, that seems to be the new way to go around it. But the U F I is a great low interest way to go about doing that, and there's a lot of matching funds. Yeah. That's good.
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
I.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Remember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Remember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Then I remember ten, authorized mayor to issue vermicom- vermicomposting request for. Proposals and negotiate county partnership for hosting.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council authorizes Mayor Steve to issue a request for proposals. For construction of a vermicomposting pilot project, and be it further resolved. That the city of Portland Common Council authorizes the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding. With the county of Portland for a joint vermicomposting project at the Cortland County landfill site.
And so on. Mister Scott. So uh vermicomposting is basically taking a food waste product, which any uh restaurant and uh schools, college. You know, uh you're gonna even have to get rid of their food, so this is a great, we don't have an option for that right now, this can be a great. Uh option to be able to do that, so it's a great initiative that uh has been put forth and grant monies have been doing, and uh. We're sad, I mean, E S C committee have uh that have been working hard to try to make this happen. We have met with the preliminary, met with the county in the landfill, and they're in agreements verbally, they have to go through processes. They have to be able to do that, so it would be a matter of, this is like the things three of the trash process, when. Phase one is the move in, phase two maybe the compactors, phase three will be, we get this food up, so we're trying to juggle all these and moving them. Up there, so we had actually built less than our landfill by recycling this food and uh using that compost to get rate. Reuse back, so uh and they're also being able to maybe kind of something for the respawn. So that part will be worked forward, but there's a lot of work that has to be done prior to that, so this gives the blanket to be able to do that.
Just also want to point out that. This site will not be within city limits, just uh just to ward off some bunk off ahead of that. This will be outside the city.
So we, Tom and I toured a vermiculture farm, we were there two toy and Troy. Years ago, and it was so impressive what they were doing. And they made a tea that you could use to dilute it and water your plants or water your garden, and they made um, you know, they had. Bags of the. Of the processed mulch that you could put down, and it was just phenomenal, and so I'm really excited that this is gonna happen. It would have happened sooner if people didn't want in the city, so that's why Tom's pointing at our. And I really, I'm excited that you're even having this, thank you.
We're moving forward and that, it's a, it is a great idea.
Yeah.
What else?
And I just want to add, people were so worried that there'd be odor, there'd be um, it would attract. Other varmints, but it didn't see any evidence of that, and we asked a lot of questions. And we walked all around the. What were they called, or pets or?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it's a pretty neat process, so it'll be, it'll be uh stay tuned, that'll be fun to get that when it gets rolling.
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
I.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number eleven, authorized lease agreement with Quodian for mail machine.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into a contract with Quodian. For a one-year lease agreement for the use of a machine to weigh and provide postage for mailings. At a cost of seven hundred and six dollars fourteen cents for the year.
I'm moving.
Now, so then. Uh so we did look at other. Other departments had mail too, but the cost, it was not moving it around and trying to process that master. He threw some a lot of mailers out, a lot of information, so I don't see that.
It's pretty cheap if it includes postage too.
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
I.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number twelve, budget plan going to the U D O for payment of services rendered by Good Neighbor Art on a suggest park basketball. Court project.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council hereby confirms that the ten thousand dollar donation. Accepted by the council on August third, two thousand twenty one. And appropriated to the Suggit Park Basketball Court Project. Be specifically appropriated for payment on the invoice submitted by Good Neighbor Art for services rendered on said project.
Miss Lane. Mister Carpenter. Uh so again, there was, the resolution wasn't clear or during that August third, twenty twenty one meeting, there was. It was a presentation made, and there was no real vote from council to to authorize this agreement to pay it. So I thought best to bring it back and then get approval to the council at this point, because I don't know that it was clear, but and we're then. Well, I uh I had, I was a. Just a donation in working progress, so I didn't realize it was an agreement, it was verbally done, so. I just thought to clean it up, we would do it this way, and that's the intent of who we need this time.
We were very lucky to have Molly Reagan in this city.
Yeah.
And everything she does, she's a talent like.
I don't know, they're like born with. Heart would be one, but born with music and her.
I know, she is a very talented.
Scary thing, I don't know, I'm out. Yeah, anybody else have a good one?
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
Hi.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number thirteen, accept and recognize donations to the Portland Youth Bureau.
Resolve that the city of Portland Common Council accepts the donations listed below and appropriates funds to the Portland Youth Bureau operating budget accounts outlined below. Donations from Todd and Michelle Bunk in the amount of five hundred dollars uh for the kitchen program. Donation from the Portland Community Foundation. Uh in the name of Marion Albert Bailey, the amount of three hundred dollars for the kitchen program.
Thank you, um what else we got to say? Yeah, so um I appreciate, again, all the donations that you threw up, oh, that's great, there's a lot of good people that, well, I want to give it to the youth. But you saying, I raise my taxes, that's okay, just make sure it's youth related, something.
Yes, can I say something?
Yes.
For your, uh I think we owe it to Mister Bennett to give him an explanation as to the ball and what uh he brought up to us earlier. Uh Mister Bennett's been doing this for. Years, it is Portland voice, and I just, I think it's important to give him an explanation, I think we spoke about this before. On, yeah, we we we're this resolution, we'll run a revolution, and then we can discuss it, I was planning on discussing it on that, okay. Very well, I think, I think it is a public session.
They do?
Back to the resolution, anybody have any questions on receiving the grant?
Thank you, many thanks.
And so, yes.
Councilmember Scott.
I.
Councilmember Sillman.
I.
Councilmember Penello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Thompson.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Okay, uh so I guess. The discussion I uh, I wanted to bring up, I mean, again, I'm not sure what. What the question was, I mean, um. My coordinated the uh event, I really haven't. Been able to have time to have, even have a meeting to have people help. So how is that, so that's kind of where it's been. Um but uh Mister Scanlon has in his possession of the ball and uh the the numbers. Uh that's who uh that was put that building, uh so that's where they are. Uh they're relamped and re- red lighting them now, with the little, nothing was working. And the numbers were wrong, obviously. So they're all being relamped as we speak, and then we'll.
Are those the things that belong to Mister Bennett?
Yeah, I, I do not, we didn't, the city doesn't have any record that they belong to them. You know, they're in that building, and that building sold, that property, you know.
Am I allowed?
Again, I just, you know, again, I will be glad to have offline conversation or whatever you want to do, I don't know that. That has to happen in public discussion, that have a, you know, a dispute, he's gonna have that, if he wants to file a dispute, and he's working, so he's like.
When we, when we talked before, I thought that we voted that we wanted him to be involved. With planning the event and executing the event, and you are so busy. It sounds like you're doing it all yourself.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, it was just a matter of trying to make this moving forward, so.
So maybe you could hand it to him at this point.
Sure, you know, sure.
I just want to speak real quick about celebrations, um most people don't know, me and myself and uh Spike being orders got started celebrations. Um so for anybody to buy any rights in that, I don't know how that could even be possible, we just turned it, Spike didn't want to do it, and at that time, the Restaurant Association didn't want to take. Take over, and so we turned it over to the downtown partnership, and then after that. That's my intake on the celebration, where that all got started, yeah, so.
Interesting that the downtown partnership sold it then.
That's.
Yeah.
Something they didn't even start.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't want to get into that, you know, without.
Yeah, I just wanted to have that out.